A warning bell that let us know that nine o'clock is coming. You're one. You are alive.
Good morning and welcome to the Berry County Board of Commissioners Committee of the Whole Meeting for April 15th, 2025. If you would please stand for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. At this time, reports from state or county officials, are there any state or county officials with us this morning that would like to update the board?
Good morning. Taking advantage of chairman's invitation, I'm not officially a state or county official, but we'll go with it. Craig Solzenberg, Village Middleville, village manager, I just want to give everybody an update on what's happening in Middleville right now. If you've been through M-37, the Mid-Villa flats have officially broken ground. In fact, the first building has got its first floor almost up already, so moving right along. They're expected to occupy that first building in September or October. Be on the lookout for applications if anybody's interested in applying there. Along with that, in front of there, there's going to be a McDonald's pretty soon, probably by the end of the summer. First time we've ever had a McDonald's in Middleville, or even anything close to fast food, so look for that. Another project going along is the Paul Henry Trail. We're repaving that whole, they're planning on repaving that whole thing and rebuilding two bridges. Costs about two and a half million dollars for that complete project. We're raising funds for that right now. We've applied to the state for about $2 million worth of that, and we've raised 325,000 so far for that. We're going to put up some signs along the trail, invite people to donate to the project if they're interested, so if you're along the trail, take a look at that also, and we'll have more information on our website coming up too. And then, other than that, we have Irving Road rebuild, we're going to rebuild Irving Road this summer, complete reconstruction, paving, water, sewer, sidewalks, the whole works this summer, so look for that. Any questions?
Big question, is the ice cream machine at McDonald's going to actually work?
That, I don't know. If not, the curly, or the, yeah, we've got another ice cream place right down the road from us, so.
Two and a half million for the project, does that require matching funds, or is that?
Yeah, so we have to raise about half a million dollars total in matching funds, so we've raised about 325,000 so far.
Okay. Has the grant been approved by the state yet, or?
Not yet. Went out, their, one application went out end of February, one of them just went out beginning of April.
Okay.
Hope to have answers by, you know, by the end of June or July for those.
Sounds like a significant enhancement to the trail.
Yes, yep, yep, it'll be, so we're paving, repaving from downtown all the way to McCann Road, which is, you know, definitely needed. Last time it was repaved, was paved, was in 2001, 2002, right around there, so very widely used trail. We did pull data with Placer AI and, you know, people from all over the county, including Kent and Allegan Counties use that trail all the time, so.
Awesome.
Yep.
Well, that's good news. Good luck on the grant. Let us know if we can help out.
Okay.
Anything we can do, so appreciate you stopping by on the other side of the table once in a while, you know.
Yeah, right, exactly, yep. All right, thank you, I'll stick around for the rest of the meeting.
Commissioners, any other questions for Craig?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I mean, should we have, so I'm in Nashville, I want to go to Grand Rapids to the mall. I typically go through Hastings and then through Middleville and Caladonia, M-37. Should I not do that for the rest of?
No, I think you should, actually. I think they're working on M-37 north of Middleville and Caladonia, but I think they're going to start that project next summer, officially tear that up, but, but no, come on through, take a look and see what the progress looks like. But the road that we're going to be working on is Irving Road, so I wouldn't take Irving Road from...
Through Irving.
Right, through Irving, yep. State road is fine.
Okay.
M-37's fine, Irving Road will be tore up a little bit, so.
Okay, because I was just reading stuff on WBCH, and I guess I didn't really understand. I thought 37 was going to be torn up.
This morning.
That's off by Grand Rapids.
Off to the expressway.
Yeah. A little bit north of Middleville.
They're going to close that right down, I think.
North of Caladonia.
Yeah, north of Caladonia even, yep.
Well, they certainly need to repave M-43, whether they take it back to dirt or pavement, I don't know, but it's got to go one way or the other, so it's got to go, so.
Okay. Thank you, Craig.
Thank you.
Limited public comment at this time. Any member of the public wishing to address the board may do so for up to three minutes for any item listed on our agenda. Hearing on, the chair would entertain a motion for approval of the April 21st, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Support, motion by Bassett, support by Hatfield for approval of the April 1st, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. This morning, we have interviews for Planning Commission, our John La Forge, I know John was here, I don't know, I didn't see Jack come in this morning yet.
I haven't seen him.
Okay.
Probably sleeping.
We'll tell him I said that, he's bigger than me.
Does get to work at night shift.
Definitely.
Well, good morning, John.
Good morning, everyone.
We typically interview new people, I think you have been on the, been on the Planning Commission, how many years now?
Six.
Six years, okay, so, and you are now the chair?
Yes.
Okay.
Don't ever go to the bathroom in meetings, that's what it is.
Is there any, would you like to give us any updates, or explain to us a little bit about what the planning and zoning is doing?
Right now, well, you guys all know, because you approved it when we did the, the new, all new, I can't even think of the name now.
That's right.
That's the one, last year. And since then, we've had to turn over, as you know, of our new planning commissioner, or planner for the county, and I just want to say that he's working really well, and, you know, coming right in, smooth, pretty much. It's been a good, good choice that you guys made, you know. Other than that, business as usual. We have some stuff coming up that, in the near future. One of the things I had talked to Jim about is, and I'd like maybe you guys to think about it, is that we do not have any policies for ML, or SMRs, which are small nuclear units, because if we're going to have people coming in and doing data centers, which we'd like to have, because it's a great, some of them are now coming in and putting their own small nuclear reactors in with them. And without going into a lot of detail, it's not like a regular nuclear reactor, because a lot of it's underground, it doesn't have to have water for cooling. So I'm thinking that that might be something that we should look at, not in the, not in the too far future for now, and just, I've known that because of what happens, oh my God, he scares me. Because of the stuff that we're seeing at Great Lakes Energy. For those of you that don't know, I'm on the Board of Directors for Great Lakes Energy, and I'm chairman of the board for our true stream, which is our fiber. So anyway, that's just one of the things that we need to look at, in my opinion.
Okay, and I know last year, they made some strides with mining, gravel mining regulations, kind of a format for how that comes into place.
Yeah, well, one of the things that was really an issue was the road commission. We had tried to make where we thought that the driveway should be, and the road commission, rightfully, had an issue with that, because they weren't involved in any of that. And that was a learning, a learning process for us. So one of the things that we do is, any, from now on, anytime that any of the mining comes in, the road commission will be brought in in the beginning, so that they can get an idea of what they want to do, and we'll have a better idea of what would be a proper place to put the road, the driveways. And when you've got that many trucks coming in and out every day, it's just something that, it would just be a lot easier to have them involved in the very beginning, as they should have been. And that was a big thing. And we do have, what I feel are some really important safeguards that we've learned, you know, noises, dust control, different things that can be monitored, water, I can't think of anything else right now.
Yeah, that's a problem.
And so, the last one we did, we put a one-year monitoring systems, excuse me, that they have to pay for. Another thing is that the reports and testing and, that need to be done prior to that, we are asking them now that they have to put a, an amount of money, and I can't remember...
So they have to set up bonds to pay for all the studies.
Yeah, I can't remember how much it is, but just have the bond for that.
So we have a true third-party, uninterested party come in and do the hydrological reports and that kind of stuff.
Right.
And we can make sure that it's being paid for properly.
Because in the past, we've had issues where it's people that work for them that are making the report, and I'm, you know, they're not a government-issue, you know, company, so they can't do that, as far as we're concerned.
I appreciate that, because gravel mining's been a big issue in the county.
Right.
And I appreciate you guys taking the lead on that and implementing a process that's the same, no matter who you are, big, small, whatever the case is, that they know when they apply, that these are the steps that you, that you need to seek to get approval. So that was some good foresight, some good vision on your part, I appreciate what you guys are doing. And I don't know, Marcia, you know Jack Nedwornik as well?
I do, yes, he's from Dell.
Okay, so I wanted to be sure all our commissioners have got a chance to meet our planning commissioners, so, David.
I have the pleasure of serving alongside these gentlemen. We've got two openings on the Planning Commission that we need to fill. Fortunately, we've got two applicants, even more fortunately, we've got two very experienced applicants, because they're both incumbents, so I think we couldn't ask for two better individuals, and I will be happy to make the nomination that we reappoint them, or that we recommend to the board, that we reappoint them for another term on the Planning Commission.
Fantastic. Jack Holland, if you've been a commissioner, planning commissioner, planning zone?
Couldn't tell you, it's been at least 15 years, probably longer than that.
That's a little bit of experience.
Yeah, we're working on it.
Working on it, okay. Are there other questions from commissioners? Mr. Bassett?
I'm just curious, you know, as you're looking at your next term, what are going to be the big issues? You know, we're talking about, we've got all this going on, that you've set some standards, what do you see ahead, and your thoughts on how you're going to approach that?
Well, we do have some gravel pit applications, I believe, Jeff? Yeah, so that's going to be really the first time, it's going to be a test, a real test of what we've done in the past, and what we've set up as new policies. So we have that coming. I don't think, one of the things that really was nice is when Consumers Energy came to us and said, this is what we want to do with the solar panel fields, what can we do to make it work good? Instead of going through the state, they came to us, and that, I think, really helped us. And I have a feeling that you're probably going to see maybe a little bit more of that. We might have, I don't know, do we have any wind turbine applications?
None, none right now.
Okay. I don't know, anything else that's coming up?
The new zoning ordinance update?
Well, yeah, right. We got that.
You may see more of the biodigesters.
Yeah, maybe some of that. We don't know, I mean, you know, it comes in, you hear things, and then it doesn't happen, and that's pretty much it.
Well, if you do get to a point where the, I guess you'd call them mini-nuclear reactors or whatever it is.
SMR.
SMRs become an issue or prevalent, let us know. I'm sure that'll raise a few eyebrows in the county when you start talking nuclear, so.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure.
But that'll be interesting, but I don't have any questions. You guys have both served your county, we appreciate your time and investment, because what you do is not easy, so that continues to go. Mr. Colton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I remember when I was on Planning and Zoning, that's when you came on, Jack. That was, that was a long time ago, a lifetime ago, but I see big controversy just to the north of us, in Ionia County, on these wind turbines. Have you been following that?
Yes.
Any thoughts on that?
Well, doing what I do, I have a lot of thoughts on wind turbines. I don't think that they're worth the money, the time, the energy, they don't last long, they break down a lot, and the big thing with those is the battery storage, same with the solar. And the, for the amount of inks that it costs in the community, for me, it's not worth it, but that, I don't need to make that decision, so we have to go by what the state's allowing right now. And there is going to be, there are some things that you can do, but for the most part, you know, they're controlled by the wind blowing, and so you can't say you can only operate it from seven till 11:00, or, and that kind of, because there is, they are noisy, too, that's the other thing. So thankfully, we haven't had that issue here, and to be honest with you, I don't really know what we can and can't do, because I haven't really studied that stuff. I just know the issues that we've had with, because, you know, we actually get our power from Wolverine, and Wolverine gets their power from several different sources. We got some nuclear, we're going to have a lot of it here later this year, maybe, hopefully. We get very little coal, we do have gas that we use, and we also get, excuse me, water from some of the, the river dams, so we have that, too. We also get solar power. We had gotten, get, been getting wind power, but it just wasn't stable enough, you know, because it goes up and down and up and down.
So you feel that, you know, in reaching the governor's ambitious goal of renewables by, what, 2040, 2050?
Yeah.
Do you feel that solar is going to get us there quicker than, than wind?
Solar will get us there in a greater quantity than wind, but what's really going to help is the nuclear plant that's coming back online. Excuse me, because that, at least, when we decided to do that, she made it a point to show that nuclear was, in fact, a renewable resource, because in some states, it's not considered that, especially in the coal areas. But because of that, we buy power from the open market as well, and without getting into a lot of details, MISO is going to, is where we normally buy it in the open market. Well, that is also nuclear, and it's also wind, and it's also solar, so that will count as the credits it will have to make to get that goal.
Okay.
I mean, right now, I think we're at a little over 60% carbon-free at Great Lakes, at all the co-ops in Michigan, pretty much.
Thank you.
Did that answer your question?
Yes.
So a lot of talking for a little bit of questions, sorry.
There you go. No, but I appreciate it. Additional questions from commissioners? Okay. Commissioner Hatfield made the motion to recommend to the Board of Commissioners reappointment of John La Forge and Jack Nedwornik to serve at the Berry County Planning Commission for a three-year term that begins on 5/1/25 and expires on 4/30/28. Would someone like to second that motion? Go ahead, John. Motion by Hatfield, support by Smelker, to recommend to the Board of Commissioners reappointment of John La Forge and Jack Nedwornik to serve in the Berry County Planning Commission for a three-year term that began on 5/1/25 and expires on 4/30/28. Additional discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Go.
Thank you for coming up this morning, it's good to see you guys again.
Do you guys ever have any questions about something with the power, anything? Feel free to call, reach out.
I think about things at like midnight, one o'clock in the morning.
It's fun, I mean, I see them in bed till two. Jack's, Jack's working till three. So we can call you if you want.
There you go.
It's easier for you.
There you go. There you go. Thank you both, we appreciate what you do.
Yep. I'll talk to you a bit.
Next up, Rachel France, scrap tire grant.
Yeah.
Getting to be a regular visitor here these days.
No, I'm sorry, you guys must be sick of me by now.
Keep doing the good work.
Doing my best. So this memorandum of understanding between us and Eaton County is business as usual, it's the same, I'm pretty sure it's the exact same as it was last year.
Okay.
Luckily, the price for the trailer hasn't gone up, which I thought it was going to, so I'm thankful for that. The scrap tire grant has not actually been, well, the grant is open still until this Friday, so they haven't announced awards yet. I'm hoping that will be done in the next couple of weeks, but I have no reason to believe that we wouldn't get it. We've never had a problem. So just to clarify, Eaton, or Eaton County holds the grant, and we are, we have this memorandum of understanding with them, so they coordinate with the tire hauling company, which is Environmental Rubber Recycling, who we have used for, well, since I've started here, that's who we've used for the past four years, so never had a problem with them, they're really great. We plan on getting three trailers at each event this year, spring and fall.
Oh.
And I'm sure we'll fill them.
Yeah. This is our, this is our fourth year for the grant now?
Just the fourth year that I've been here.
Fourth year you've been, okay.
As far as I'm aware, that we've had it every year that we've done tire collections in this county.
Okay, so just a simple memorandum, any questions from commissioners? You said this has been an annual, we're used to seeing these. Okay, the chair would entertain a motion to recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval of the memorandum of understanding with Eaton County for the 2025 Eagle Scrap Tire Grant, and authorize the chair to sign it. So moved, Dave Bell.
Support.
Motion by Camp Bell, support by Tunisin, to recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval of the memorandum of understanding with Eaton County for the 2025 Eagle Scrap Tire Grant, and authorize the chair to sign it. Additional discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Andrew.
Good morning.
Good morning. You know how to take a simple board package and make it lots of ratings.
Yes, I do my best, although it should be fairly familiar by now.
Yes.
These are, I am here for the, the wonders of remonumentation in 2025, and I have three items for you to consider this morning. The peer board, or peer review board appointments, which is the standard board appointment that we've had for the last few years now. This allows us to, to review all of the work that the contracted surveyors have done and get those approved and onto the state of Michigan. The second is the Monumentation Surveyors Agreement, which is the contract with the surveyors to complete the services as outlined in this year's grant. And the third is a little different, because this is the first year we don't have a county surveyor acting as the representative, is a contracted position, since the dissolution of the position and recommendation is to have a service contract with Mr. Reynolds, so.
Okay.
If you have any questions, I would be more than happy to.
Starting with the remonumentation peer review board appointments and agreements, I didn't study it in detail, but it looked like it was fairly boilerplate, and are there any changes as far as who's on the board, the appointments, we're using the same surveyors?
Same surveyors, same per diems.
Okay, same surveyors, same per diems?
Correct.
No changes at all?
Nope.
Questions from commissioners? They're pretty boilerplate, and we've seen them year after year. Guess the question is, how is the remonumentation process going?
Oh, it's going splendid, fabulous. We are up to, let's see, 85% of the total corners completed, thus far, so.
Okay.
88% of the grid corners and 43% of the meanders, which are kind of, that's where they cross the rivers and water, things like that, so that's the, that'll probably be the last portion.
Okay, estimated completion date?
To be determined.
Okay.
I think I've given that answer since I've started here, doing this.
Yeah, what if, do they do 25 corners a year, 40 corners a year?
This year, we're set for 37. Last year, we were set on the record with the state to do 33, and I believe we just submitted 43, so we were, we submitted more corners last year than we had anticipated, so we just have room for extras, so if, the way that the contracts are set up, if they can add more corners with the amount that are assigned to them, they do it and present it to the board, or to the peer group.
Awesome, 88%, we're getting there.
Yes, we are.
We are getting there. Questions from commissioners? Okay, on item number one, listen closely, and we're going to read this long one once. The chair would entertain a motion to recommend to the Board of Commissioners to appoint the following licensed surveyors to the Berry County Remonumentation Peer Review Board for 2025. Steven C. Kolberg with Arrow Land Surveys, Inc., Michael P. Pratt with Crane Land Surveying, PC, Cameron Reed with Lear with Excel Engineering, Inc., Randall J. Johnkers with Johnker Land Surveying, PC, Rodney Lee Breadwig with Land and Resource Engineering, LRE, and Ryan Miller with RD Miller Land Surveying, and authorize the chairperson to sign the attached 2025 agreements for peer review services on behalf of Berry County.
I'm moved.
Support. Motion by Colton, support by Hatfield. Additional discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Next on your agenda is the Monumentation Survey Agreements. So same question, boilerplate?
Yes, sir.
Standard agreements, no changes?
Only changes, slight change to the amount of the contract, I think it's been reduced by 50, $50, and it's just up-down based on the grant, so it's 63.50 per surveyor.
Okay. Questions from commissioners? The chair would entertain a motion to recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval to enter the attached 2025 Monumentation Survey Agreements and authorize the chairperson and grant administrator to sign the attached agreements on behalf of the county.
I'm moved.
Support, Keith Bell. Motion by Tunisin, support by Camp Bell, to recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval to enter the attached 2025 Monumentation Survey Agreements and authorize the chairperson and grant administrator to sign the attached agreements on behalf of the county. Any additional discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. And finally, Remonumentation County Represent, Representative Service Agreement, so this is new.
This is new. This is, again, just a boilerplate service contract with the county for services with Mr. Reynolds for the performance of the county represent, county representative, which is required by the legislation to be a professional surveyor, and in the past, he's...
Served this for...
Forever, I believe, so. So it's a one-year contract for $12,000, and it's in the budget for 2025.
Okay. Brian, how long have you been working with us now?
I assumed the office of county surveyor January 1st, 1993.
93.
So I've been administering the program for that long.
We appreciate your continued service and willingness to serve the county, thank you.
Yes.
Reading through it, I didn't see anything that stood out in this, this looks fairly boilerplate and fairly simple.
Yes, sir.
Questions from commissioners?
He should know what he's doing by this time.
He's had a lot of practice. We think he's got it figured out. But just in case. The Chair would entertain a motion to recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval of the 2025 Agreement for Remonumentation County Representative Services with Brian Reynolds, PS, and authorize the chairperson to sign the agreement on behalf of the county.
So moved. Support.
Motion by Smelker, support by Hatfield, to recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval of the 2025 Agreement for Remonumentation County Representative Services with Brian Reynolds, PS, and authorize the chairperson to sign the agreement on behalf of the county. Any additional questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Good to see you again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Emily.
Hello.
How are you this morning?
Good. I'm Molly Reed. I'm the Berry County Register of Deeds. I am here to request an approval of the resolution to approve my office's new face fee schedule. I do have a slight correction to the resolution. At the bottom, under the Laredo online subscription fees, on the third bullet point, that should read 501 to 1,000 minutes, not 500. So most of my office's fees are set by state statute. This includes recording, copy, and most of our search fees, but some of them are at the discretion of the board. The first one I'm looking to update is really just a renewal of our track search fees. It's at the standard dollar a minute fee. So that's anytime someone wants to search by legal description or parcel number through our documents. From what I've seen, it's a dollar a minute across the state, so we're just looking to renew that. We'd like to update our notary fee from $5 to $10, similar to what the clerk's office did at the beginning of this year. That way, we're all aligned and not competing with each other. And finally, the big one is our Laredo subscription fees. So we went with Fiddler Technologies as our software company in 2021, and Laredo is the program that we use for remote access for like our regular searchers, like title companies and attorneys, anyone who needs to frequently or regularly search through our documents. They can purchase a subscription for a set amount of minutes a month and look through our documents. It does not include copies. That's a dollar a minute per the state statute, or that's a dollar a page per the state statute. Since 2021, we have done some projects in our office. We've done a lot of back indexing. At the time we went live with Fiddler, we had been indexed about to the 1940s. You could search through our documents that far. We are now into the 1870s, so we've added about 70 years, which, from what I could tell, is about 300,000 more documents that our subscribers can search through. We are also working on getting our track book. They were digitized last year, so we're getting those images put in. So since 2021, we've greatly increased the value of having a subscription with Berry County. And I received notice this year that Fiddler is increasing the portion of the fee that they will be receiving, so I'm looking to update our prices. Currently, we, the county is bringing in $20 for most of the plans, and there's the highest level of minutes, we're bringing in $15. The rest of it's going to Fiddler. So I took Fiddler's new fee that they are receiving and added $30. So the county will be making $30 per subscription per month, no matter what level they sign up as. So if they want to decrease and go down to a smaller amount of minutes, it's not going to make a difference for the county. So those are the fees that I'm looking to get updated. Any questions?
And you said these fees are fairly standard across the state?
Yeah. The track search fee is that standard. The Laredo, I've looked at all the counties that use Laredo. There's about 30 counties in Michigan that use Fiddler, and right now, we're significantly below average in our prices. It's not an easy apples-to-apples comparison because all the counties are structured differently for how they do their fees. My proposed prices will put us closer to the average. It's still going to be a little bit below, but we don't include track searching in with our regular searching, so that is going to be a separate fee where some counties include that all together, so that puts their prices a little higher. So I think, I think the proposed prices will even us out and we'll be in a good spot.
Sounds like you've done your research on this and just comparable counties, comparable size.
Yeah.
Okay. Questions from commissioners?
Mr. Truman?
Yes.
I'm just curious, do we have any, a lot of those subscriptions? Is that a large number?
Right now, we have about 18. You know, as, as the housing market picks up, we kind of get more or less, depending on who, if there's regular activity in the county, that title companies need to be searching. We do make most of our, the county makes most of the money from copy purchases or the track searching, so. But this, this subscription fee can help with, cover some of the software costs.
Thank you. Additional questions? Hearing none. The Chair would entertain a motion to recommend to the Board of Commissioners adoption of Resolution 25-15, Resolution approving fees for the Berry County Register of Deeds Office effective June 1st, 2025.
So moved. Support, Campbell.
Motion by Hatfield, support by Campfield, Campbell, to recommend to the Board of Commissioners adoption of Resolution 25-15. He was on vacation, I forgot his name. A Resolution approving fees for Berry County Register of Deeds Office effective June 1st, 2025. Additional discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Emily.
Thank you.
Eric.
Morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning. The Beautiful's Designware Property at Long Last.
Yes. Thanks to the work Jen and the folks, Craig and others, at the Village of Middleville, we have an offer on the property in Middleville that we acquired by accident. This property was acquired during demolition of the Baby Bliss facility, had a shared wall, if you all remember that. So it's been taken down, it's cleared. I know we still have to put grass seed on it and as soon as the weather breaks to make sure that Doug stays happy, and Jen knows that. But we have an offer of $60,000 for the purchase of the property that will satisfy all our obligations through the demolition. Thanks to that, to the grant that the Chamber worked with us to get and to bake that down, take the Baby Bliss down and prepare the site, and we have a little extra left over to pay the taxes that we paid last year, plus a little bit. So we're asking you to recommend to the Board approval of sale to the Otto's. Jen's been working to get a letter. This is a verbal offer, and she's been working to get that in writing. Both Craig and Jen say it's a firm offer and recommend sending it through. The land bank also did approve this request. The land bank board of directors. So you will have that letter before next week's meeting.
Okay.
And this, this motion would authorize myself and the county attorney to prepare and sign all documents for this.
Yeah, when I was first going through this and looking at this, I thought $60,000 was very low for a riverfront parcel, but it's also a very, very tiny parcel.
Very, very tiny.
Not really buildable, so, and it does have some issues with the river being right there and some stabilization things that we have.
Yep.
Been talking about this for quite some time at the land bank in Brownfield, so.
And we did advertise. We put it on our website, the Chamber pushed it, and this was the only offer we received. So that being said, I, we recommend selling the property to the Otto's.
So this clears the debt out that we took on when we accidentally acquired the building, so we're gonna move forward with it. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Questions from commissioners? Okay. The Chair would entertain a motion to recommend to the Board of Commissioners to accept the offer from Nate and Jillian Otto of $460,000 for the purchase of 118 West Main Street in the Village of Middleville from the land bank, and authorize the county attorney and administrator to complete all necessary agreements for the sale of property.
So moved, Hatfield. Support.
Motion by Hatfield, support by Tunison, to recommend to the Board of Commissioners to accept the offer from Nate and Jillian Otto for $60,000 to purchase, for the purchase of 118 West Main Street in the Village of Middleville from the land bank, and authorize the county attorney and administrator to complete all necessary agreements for the sale of property. Additional discussion?
I just have a question, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Maybe I missed this in the discussion, but I was curious as to, you know, this is not the best little piece of property. What is the Otto's interested in this?
I think they're planning on putting a bait shop, bait shop and coffee shop.
Slash deli.
There you go. Publicly sourced.
So moved. Okay. Other questions? Hearing done. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I vote.
The motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. At long last, we can have a resolution for that piece of beautiful property. It has been a while since we've been talking about it, so. Anything else, Eric?
Public comment.
I'm gonna do public comment. At this time, any member of the public wishing to address the board may do so for up to three minutes.
Mr. Chair, area's just got 4169 South Fair Drive. Hopefully soon. I just wanted to make a comment on Commissioner Colton's question during the Planning Commission about the wind turbines. I think the key on this issue, there's two for me. One is, according to Jim McManus, all of our studies show us not as, a very positive area for wind turbines. We just don't have the consistent wind for it. Although lately along Long Lake, I don't know if you've noticed, but it's been windy all the time lately, so. But two, remember, and I think this is the bigger thing I wanted to pass on to the board, and I know Jeff knows this too, is you can't exclusionary zone things out. You have to provide for it in your ordinances. It's, you can't just say, no, we can't have it. And it's the same thing with the solar. You have to provide for it, you have to provide a location for it. The only thing you can exclude out is marijuana. So I mean, that, because that's what was written in a certain way, it's a license. So I know it's a controversial issue, and I know solar didn't go over very well with some people. You can't ban it, you have to provide for it, but the manner in which you provide for it's the key. So I just want to remind the board of that, so that you get questions or if you get concerns, those are issues that we have to face, and Jeff and the Planning Commission will have a tall job when that comes. But state law says you have to allow for it, so just wanted to share that, remind the board that.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
Good morning again, Craig Stoltenberg, Middleville. Couple items. First, thank you for the sale, or proposed sale next week for the baby, or the former Designware building. Be a nice addition to downtown and to a good neighbor in Middleville, so we appreciate that. Secondly, I want to thank Emily for the improved customer service in the Register of Deeds Office. It was really nice to go in there a couple of weeks ago and actually see smiling faces in there. It was pretty neat. As a real estate professional for over 20-some years, it was, it's been a nice improvement in there, so thank you for that.
Awesome. Thank you. Good to hear. Additional public comment?
Rachel France, Berry Conservation District. I just wanted to let everybody know that we have our My Core Volunteer Stream Monitoring events coming up, May 2nd and 3rd. So we'll be getting in the river and collecting bugs to determine water quality at six sites in the Thornhample River watershed. For more information, you can go to berrycd.org/waterquality. That's it. Thanks.
Perfect. Thank you. Additional public comment?
Hi, Jennifer Heinsman, Berry County Chamber Economic Development. I just want to let everybody know that our ribbon cutting is tomorrow at 4:00 at our new building. We have officially moved into the old Tremble Building, and open houses from 4:00 to 6:00 will feed you, and there's even beer.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
This is Spence. Rick Moore, Irving Township. I just wanted to let you know that the Berry River Bay went very well over the weekend, on Saturday. The Trail Association, through the generosity of the Bull House family, sold 275 parking spaces, and we, at $30 apiece, we used that money to leverage grant funding, and so we'll probably be working with Middleville next to help their paving of the trail, because that's an area that the Bull House family would like to see, to connect Middleville and Hastings and the work a little closer. We've already donated $25,000 to the Nashville section of the trail, and that's extremely popular, and now they're wishing that we continue paving further to the west, because there's a quite a large group of people in that neighborhood who want to connect to the trail. It will require another road crossing, but they definitely want that section of the trail. Like Craig said, the trail was paved around 2001, and in Middleville, it's getting a little rough from the tree roots growing underneath it, and the critters who would like to live underneath the trail and have that asphalt for roof. Doesn't last very long before, you know, it caves in, and that kind of thing. And so to have a 24-year lifespan on that asphalt's pushing the boundaries a little bit, but it's an extremely popular section of the trail. And everyone is asking me, when I'm working out there, when will we continue farther to the north? And we're working on that as well, but after 44 years of fighting this battle, and I know it takes a lot of time, you gotta have a lot of patience, and be a little stubborn with a smile on your face in order to get the job done. But no, we're making fabulous progress. The River Bay probably brought in around, they predict, around a million dollars in benefits to local businesses. So for that time that it's a little crowded on West Green Street, you know, it's very beneficial for the entire community. And since I have two houses on West Green Street, I got an excellent view of what's going on. But I was there at the parking lot at quarter to five in the morning, and I was there continuously for 12 hours, and so, yeah, I put my time in. But I want to thank and congratulate all of you for putting your time in, because I know you do a lot of other things, other than just sitting here and listen to me. So thank you very much for all you do. And Santa Claus? Santa Claus? Good to see you again, too. Thank you very much for all you do. Thank you. Additional public comment? Did you hear how many bikes there was?
I didn't hear the exact count, but I think it was close to 5,600 bicyclists in town this year. At what time did they start? Seven o'clock or six o'clock?
7:00 AM.
7:00 AM.
I'll place a report, too, so we can tell you the exact economic impact.
Oh, perfect. Perfect. That'd be awesome. So, yeah, it was good. The weather was good. Everything worked out perfectly, so. Except for me, I was trapped, but just don't go anywhere. Or hand out water, one or the other. Anyways, Commissioner comments. Commissioner Bassett.
Well, as many of you may have read in the local newspapers, the Dalton Callag Band has been invited to participate for the third time in the Pearl Harbor Parade coming up this December, and they have a very big task of trying to raise about $175,000 in order that all the students can attend from the band. So efforts are full force, so you'll hear about spaghetti dinners at the Moose, and you'll read about it in the paper, and there are ways to just directly donate to their cause so that these students can go. And our school has a history of supporting veterans in our community, and it's just a wonderful thing, the way that the director has, has encouraged that and supported that, and this is just another way that we can keep those memories alive for our young people. So great trip to support. So, great trip to support. The other is that we have a lot going on with Revitalize Dalton right now, which is we've got some housing meetings this week. Thank you, Jennifer, and we have a big meeting tonight, and things are continuing to proceed ahead, and it's very exciting. So, as things develop, I'll try, you know, where we have definitive developments, we'll be updating the Board on that, but there's a lot going on in Dalton, so.
Awesome. Thank you. Commissioner Colton?
Comments by Eric tied into a meeting that was in Nashville this week. So, as Eric was saying, legal businesses, it may be distasteful to some people, it could be a windmill, solar panel, adult bookstore, gentleman's club. These things are legal businesses, and you have to make some accommodation for them, except marijuana. And I was part of writing that bill because we recognize what's right for liberal Ann Arbor is not right for conservative Holland, Michigan. And so, we wrote it in a way that communities could debate it and decide if they wanted this kind of activity in their community or not. So, I watched the wheels that work in Nashville. Someone wanted to open a marijuana dispensary in Nashville, and so there was a public hearing on whether Nashville was going to have marijuana or not, and I came to be a bug in the wall just to see how this would play out, and it was pretty much no. All the letters, all the people in the audience, pretty much, the only person who was for it was the person that wanted to open the dispensary. And I do not think the village council will, will proceed with anything like this. It's just not right for Nashville. Baltimore Township, the supervisor came down, they do have it. Craig came down from Middleville, said, you know, they have a couple dispensaries there, and described a little bit their experience with it there, and, but it's just not right for, for Nashville.
First thing. Thank you. Commissioner Smucker?
Catherine, I attended Thornapple Township last night, and I also attended Village of Freeport. And Thursday, we have a joint meeting with 911 and the Fire Association. Once a year, we meet together and talk about things that need to be done with the Fire Association, so. That's all I got. I do have a question, can I ask?
Sure.
Have we heard anything from appraisal from the garage property? Have we gotten?
They were here on Saturday looking at it, so just waiting to hear back.
Thank you. Commissioner Hatfield?
Jennifer was kind enough to invite everybody to their ribbon cutting tomorrow afternoon. I hope you'll take advantage of that, or if you can't make that, at least stop in sometime soon. I think she's been living there for the last week to facilitate the transit, oh, two weeks, excuse me, to facilitate the relocation, but it is a beautiful facility, and it's going to serve the Chamber slash EDA very, very well, and that's just a very small part of their effort to move the Chamber EDA into the next century so they can continue to serve us so well. So, congratulations, and I hope you'll all, you'll all attend. I attended the Hastings City Council meeting last night. Interesting update on the Green Street project, which of course is topmost on most people's mind in the city of Hastings, because that's going to be a major disruption. It is moving ahead. The engineers were there last night. Yeah, it certainly looks like they've done a great job of planning that in a way to be as minimally disruptive as, as possible. It may or may not start this year. They're giving the, they're out for bid or are about to go out for bid. They're giving the contractors the option of whether or not they start this year and then suspend activity over the winter and finish next spring, or whether they wait until spring and then complete the entire project in the 2026 construction season, so.
And this is the proposed roundabout?
It includes a, a roundabout, yes, but it's much, much more than that. It is a total demolition of Green Street. It replaces sanitary sewer, it replaces storm sewer, it replaces water lines, it replaces the lead service lines into properties along Green Street, puts in new driveway aprons, puts in new, new sidewalk. So, it is a huge project. There is what they refer to as a mini roundabout that will be at the intersection of Green and Market, but it is constructed in such a way that it's very low curbing, so trucks and things can actually pass over the roundabout if they're too big to actually make the, the small circle. The project actually also does improve the three-block stretch of Market from Green down to State.
Wow. Huge, huge project.
But I mean, it basically goes from Broadway all the way out to Titan Park, or not Titan Park, Fish Addery Park.
Okay.
John?
Was there a length of time we may be working on this?
Well, it basically, it, it, once it starts, and it depends on whether they divide it into two, two segments or do it in one, but if it's done in one segment, it will start as whenever construction season opens next spring and go, go through the entire summer. So, it's going to be a six, eight-month process. But you're going to have a totally brand-new street.
First thing.
Yeah, it will be very interesting.
Didn't remind me not to take that road, so.
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've been on vacation. It's been two weeks. It was great. I won't go into the details what made it great. But I'm going to tell you, there's nothing like coming back to Berry County. It's the best county that ever was and will ever be. It's just great to be back to Berry County.
Thank you. Commissioner Tunison?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've been to three township meetings, three of my townships, and Hastings Charter, Rutland, and Colton, and discussion on everyone's about the ambulance service. Mercy Ambulance has been here for almost 35 years, and their contract's going to run out in '26. They've come to pretty much every township and asked basically for a subsidy just to stay open. Okay, they're having employee problems, you know, cost is going up on everything, their reimbursements are really been cut in half in a lot of instances, so. And we can't afford to be without ambulance service in Berry County. They provide two ambulances. Rutland has already opted out to go with Thornapple and contract with them for a year. The Birch Board's being proactive and, and going to be having an ambulance to assist Mercy, basically. Well, then, before the end of the year, they hope. Okay? So, they're being proactive on this. They see that chances are after '26, Mercy might not be here. So, we're going to, you know, that's two ambulances, okay? That we can't afford to be without. So, this is going to become a county issue. This isn't just going to be based in just Birch area. So, it's something that we're, we're all going to be cognizant of that, that we need an ambulance service, okay? So, but I was really reassured last night that the Birch Board is really kind of partnering with the, with the fire chief and getting ambulances. Hopefully, they're going to try to have two up and running, but there's a major cost involved with this, right? So, I just wanted everybody to be aware of what's going on in the county with the, with our ambulance service, so bring it up to, bring it to light.
Thank you. Yeah, that was a big discussion at Rutland Township, and they opted to go a different way. They were having that discussion last night at Hope Township. Mercy did not show up to participate in that discussion, so they tabled it, but that is on the minds of a lot of people right now, is with the future of ambulance services in the county right now, so. Marcia Bassett and I, Commissioner Bassett and I, and our administrator Eric Zuzka spent the day in Lansing. I spent the day in Lansing, too, so I think you guys were there a little more time. Good updates on what's happening across the world of Michigan, some of the things they're proposing, revenue sharing. One of the interesting things was road funding, where they talked about the road plan, if it actually goes through, would almost double what the local roads, what local road commissions are getting. I think they said 97%. So, if the bill that is proposed actually passes, that could have a significant impact for local roads, not just state highways and stuff, but local roads would really be getting a boost in that. They also talked about youth housing for youth offenders, talked a lot about housing in general, several good sessions. So, if you haven't had a chance to attend those, it is a long day. They feed you really well, very worthwhile, good, good opportunity to network and meet a lot of people as well, so. Great event there. So, other than that, Bob and I, and Dave Hatfield and a few others have been involved in, with the help of Eric and his community development experience and, and continuing the discussion for the Myers. So, we're hoping to create some potential avenues between the city and Rutland Township and make that happen at some point. There's nothing definitive yet, but discussions are ongoing, and we know that Myers have said that it's a priority spot for them. They'd like to be in Berry County, so we're trying to assist them in making that happen, so. With that, we appreciate you showing up on a beautiful day. I've stood out in many soccer fields with my kids in the snow and the rain and the freezing, so welcome to Michigan, and welcome back, Bruce, so.